Thank you. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number Nine, held today on May the 22nd, 2023. This meeting is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, will you please read the Statement of Notice of Publication?
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6, 2023, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Krenzel.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Gindy.
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Here.
Councilwoman Mira.
Here.
Council President Olivera.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pleasure of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for moment's silence. Please, in your prayers and thoughts, remember those that have given their lives for the defense of this country. Please be seated. There are no proclamations, honors, awards, or presentations. We do have two items on the agenda session. The first, Department of Public Works Summer Hours, that would be, I think...
Mayor, this is just a normal notification that starting the dates in the memo, the Borough workers will be starting earlier and leaving earlier due to the heat.
And when was that?
First May 30th.
All right. And the second thing is I ask that this be put on. I sent you all the email that was sent to us concerning the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education, the Borough of South River, the Rutgers Cooperative Extension, and the South River Green Team. I sent you also the... It's hard to see on the... When you print it, but when you look at it in the colored section of the attachments, you have a better view of what they're planning. And I have some concerns by this, which I've spoken to Mr. Lundenski, and I'd ask him to repeat some of those concerns.
Mayor, when we originally got the proposal, we were told all it would be would be digging a hole and removing some dirt. I sent the email over to Mr. Koch. We had a discussion this morning. It appears to be much more than that. Appears to be laying drainage pipe, doing terracing. I don't know if our DPW have the equipment or the ability to do that type of work.
Okay. I ask that it be brought on the agenda session for this time, because we're not going to make a decision here, but I would like you to look into this more over the next three weeks and find out exactly what do we have to do. If you need be, call the people that are involved. I'm sure Mr. Byrne will be... Have information on this. And maybe even, I think, Mr. Byrne mentioned that Westfield had something similar to this.
I swear, I drew the sample resolution up from there, 2019 resolution, to this exact report.
Okay. So then, therefore, that we can, you know, look into it and find out just what are we going to have to do and, you know, can we physically actually do it? If we don't have the equipment, then we're kind of sunk before we start. So, okay. Does anybody have any questions about this or observations?
Mr. Mayor, would you like for our Green Team member, Dory, to... Dorian to come and make the presentation to you? Would that be easier for you to understand what is involved and what will be needed from the Borough?
She was wanting to come today, but she's a home health worker, so she gets calls at the last minute to show up to Mrs. Person's.
Well, that's another person that you can go and talk to, Mr. Lundenski, about that. To, again, just to get us the information as to what is expected of us to build this thing. So, okay, because, I mean, it sounds intriguing. We're interested, but now the devil's in the details. So, let's go through that, then. All right. Moving on to the agenda sessions, there's nothing more on that issue. First reading by title only, ordinance 2023-20. Madam Clerk.
2023-20, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriating $2,095,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,342,500 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2023-20 on its first reading by title alone, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 p.m. on June the 12th, 2023, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second up. Motion has been made by Council President Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindy.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yeah.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
And this is for the improvements that we have every year, things as mundane as the street sweeper, 9/11 radios, municipal vehicles, improvements of various roads within the Borough. Bond Ordinance 2023-21.
2023-21, bond ordinance providing for improvements to the water treatment, storage, and distribution system, appropriating $950,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $900,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2023-21 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 p.m. on June the 12th, 2023, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindy.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
And this ordinance concerns the all-for-water Borough Water Treatment, Storage, and Distribution System and other matters, water mains, letting galvanized pipes, valves, fire hydrants, and things like that relating to the Water Department. Well, we come to our various reports. Mr. Koch.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The 2020 and 2021 road improvements, the final punch list item was completed. I'm just giving the pavement repair a chance to oxidize and see if the ponding water issue was resolved. If it is, then we can close that out. The 2022 local aid, that's awarded, and the contractor will be scheduling the milling and paving work for next week, I believe. The 2023 local aid, you have a resolution on your agenda to authorize us. That's what I'll refer to as discretionary grant, where the governor accepts applications. This is not your routine one. It is additional money that you have an opportunity to obtain, so if authorized, we'll make that application. We've chosen three roads that have sump pump problems, which tends to provide you with icing issues in the winter, so that is what we would submit for. Then the 2024 local aid, that's the annual one that you apply for. That deadline is July 1st. The previous one is June 1st, so we can talk about which roads you'd like to submit for there. I'm going to diverge for a moment here. We did do... I did do the testing and have the reports for Fitzpatrick Field as well as Veterans Drive. And the reason I bring this up now is because the Fitzpatrick Field one is a challenge, and I think been giving it some thought since we got the report. And I think doing work in Union Avenue, storm sewer up from the main storm sewer line up, would allow us to do maybe some underground drainage in the area by the playground and then cross the top of the park to intercept some water. And I thought that if you wanted to, you can include that as one of the three roads for your 2024 trust fund, so that the storm sewer would hopefully be funded by the DOT and maybe minimize the Borough's actual cost by just going from the roadway then into the site to try and dry up those areas. Actually downstream or downhill of the battery project seems pretty good right now, and I've seen people playing on the basketball court. That seems to be great at outage, and it looks good. And there is still some wet area over by the playground. So, just something for your thoughts. If you wanted to do that drainage on your own, out of your own capital money, that's fine, but I thought it might be an opportunity to find funding for it. The substation, I understand that it's all done. The only thing left is the training. So, once we get that done, I can close out that project and give you a proposal for the annual maintenance, because it's been about two years because of how long this, you know, some of this stuff has taken along with getting the SCADA system and getting it set up. Well, number two is done. The water treatment plant upgrades, which is the air gap, that is... And the backflow preventers going along very quickly. I think in another week or so, they'll be done with that. As far as the sodium hypochlorite storage, there's a resolution on your agenda to reject the bids. They were considerably higher than we thought. That may be something you want to revisit at some point in the future if you get some grant funding from the federal government. And then the NJDP Stormwater Assistance Grant, that's for $25,000. In the year 2025, you have to have all your storm sewer inlets located and mapped, and this is intend... Not exclusively, but you can use it for other things as well. But I believe it's primarily intended to get you money to help with having that done. So, that's on a rolling basis. I believe, Mr. Lundenski, you received a copy of it. I think all we need is a signature, whether you want to submit it.
On that.
Did you give it back to us to submit, to our show? Great. Then soon you should get a letter from them, and you'll get the $15,000 upfront, and I think further down the line, you can get the other 10. And I think that is it for now.
Anything for Bruce?
I have a question, Bruce.
Yes.
So, what did the report say about Fitz's Park? Was it...
I'll touch on both. So, Fitzpatrick, some of the areas are actually not bad, but there are areas closer to the baseball fields, you know, downstream of the basketball court. Some of those areas are fine. Up where we are, it's wet, there's clay, but it's pretty deep. I think, just think it's coming off the hill and running through there, and there's really no... Nothing we can do in terms of... That I can see in terms of creating a seepage pit or something. I think it's really got to be connected to a storm sewer to really try to address it. And for veterans, it looks like the groundwater elevation, not necessarily the groundwater elevation, that might be in the five to six-foot range, but at four feet or so, it starts to show signs of moisture. And we're talking about it today. It's not in the flood zone. We're talking about whether we could raise the field a little bit if you decide to do an artificial turf field and address it that way. Usually, there's a couple feet of stone underneath and then a discharge to take that water away. We'd have to look at... We got the Willowood ditch there and see if there's any environmental constraints associated with that in terms of buffers. So, at some point, if you really think you want to move forward, that I'd probably be prudent to do some sort of environmental study just to find out what would be needed there, and then go forward with it if you'd like to.
Okay. And my other question about the water treatment plan?
Yes.
The sodium hypochlorite storage improvement, it didn't seem like Agra knew what we were talking about at the last meeting. Was that, like, who brought that up to be fixed?
We had presented that to the governing body. You authorized us by resolution. We designed it, we put it out to bid. Agra was looking at the possibility of doing three custom-built tanks, which I was aware of, Mr. Lundenski and I have talked about. We thought it would be a couple hundred thousand dollar less, and this would be tank, be a separate building outside of the Public Works Building, so the staff wouldn't have chlorine around them. And so, we've bid it in other towns. We put the project together, but it came up, I think, close to $700,000. So, it's just the times, it's just expensive. So, I believe you're going to reject the bids and just move forward with however you're going to address replacing those tanks.
Okay. And the stormwater grant, is that just that they want to map it out in the whole town? That's like the requirement for 2025?
Yes.
Okay.
All the inlets and the outfalls. Now, the outfalls should be mapped already, but we have to create a map. I think there... I know there was a storm sewer study maybe 25 years ago, actually a little more, 30 years ago, pre-99, because that's when Heritage Hills began, and we did a storm sewer map back then for the south end, just to figure out how to handle the Heritage Hills drainage and where to route it and such. But beyond that, I'm not aware of the Borough having a storm sewer map. So, it gives you some front money to be able to start that process, and then if you need to finish it next year and have it for your 2025 submission.
Okay.
All righty.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I just have... How's the work progressing up on by Appleby and Fifth and that with the...
That's fine. They are... They did the concrete work, taking care of everything. The next thing is to go up there and start with the milling and overlay. We contacted them today. They don't have an exact schedule for us, because they're on another job, but I think next week.
Anyone else? No? Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Zenga?
Thank you, Mayor. The record is the first two readings, the first reading of both bond ordinances, the South River, that's the state of Jersey, and is also on file with the Borough Clerk. You have a resolution on the agenda for non-profit schools annually, and another resolution to waive the trust fund portion of the ABC licenses. That's the $200 that goes in the trust fund. Jersey continues to wait. Another resolution for purchase and installation of a camera system on 55 Reed under a co-op. Resolution applying for a $20,300 lead grant assistance program funding. Finally, you should have received the new updated resolution for Chapter 159 for two grants received, second investment grant and clean community grant. These grants were received after the budget was adopted, so we need to do a Chapter 159 ordinance. Get it into the 2020 budget.
Very good. Anything for Mr. Zenga? Okay. We'll get to you, chief. Sores?
We installed a four-way stop at Colfax and Ferris, Dallow and Ferris, and we'll be installing number one at Creek. Fox and June.
Anything for Mr. Sores? Chief?
Mayor, I don't have anything to report on the police end, but I do have a plug for two communities. Next Saturday, June 3rd at 9:00 a.m., we will be having our... And Public Security. I have my back parking lot there. And we will also be hosting our junior... Going into the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and that will run from June 20th. Going into 2020 bits, and the last day to submit an application on June 2nd by 4:00 p.m.
Very good. Anything for our chief? No? Our fire chief, do you have anything to add?
We're up to 155 falls for the year. We're going to have our memorial services on Monday at 9:00 a.m. at the Firehouse. We'll be closing off, as usual, Robin Street, Reddick Jackson, and so forth. Ask it for a couple, like an hour. What does it have there?
Okay. Very good. All right, then. To our clerk, all is well for primary day?
Yep.
All set? Excellent. The legal department?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Arthur, anything?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I guess in the next few days, the county is going to be paving their contributions in Borough this year. They're doing two blocks from Olbers Turnpike to Main Street on Hillside. There are signs up already about the tar that they're going to use and everything else. We do not have word from the county when they're going to start tearing up Main Street. Soon as I have that, I will pass that on. Joe brought up cameras, and Joe brought up the 186 authorization. As you know, we... The state passed a regulation that certain residences, we have to go in and check for lead paint. They are now offering a grant of approximately $23,500 to the Borough in assistance for that, because more than likely, we have no one qualified. We're going to have to go to a third-party agency, so that will help. That's what we're applying for that grant.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Very good. Anything for Arthur?
I have a question. Our Resolution 175, the contract for the water meter replacement project, do we have any idea when we're going to start that or what our next steps are?
Well, the next step of this will be after tonight, contracting, notifying the contractor that he's been approved, and he just has to get a hold of the meters, and he'll start working. We'll give everybody notice of that timeframe.
Have we divided the town into sections of how we're going to start the project?
We will have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and decide to list the streets and notify the people that they will be coming to get into their houses to change out the meters.
Okay. And do we know, like, what the timeframe is to do the whole town? Do we have an idea?
How long it'll take?
Yes.
No. Approximately six months, I believe.
To put everybody live the way the electric utility is done, correct?
Say it again.
You're saying it would take about six months to put the water meters live like the electric meters are?
Correct.
Okay.
Are... Have... We've been, like, proactive with the residents, you know, that have estimated bills. Is there any way to, like, contact them? Because if they're actually getting meter reader... Meter readings now, I'm sure that first bill is going to be either be significantly higher or significantly lower if they've been on estimated readings.
What we intend to do is, as they replace a meter, we're going to have them place that meter, the old one, in the same box of the new one, tag it, and we're going to send the meters out to be calibrated, get a report back. We will then know if they were running slow, they were running properly, and then we'll move forward. I would imagine there are going to be some meters that have been running slow.
And if they were running slow, how do you determine, once they're calibrated, you know?
Once they check them and tell if they're running slow, we'll know why the next bill they get will be higher, because they were running slow before that. We're not going to go backwards.
Yeah, so if they've had estimated readings...
Estimated readings, or they have a slow meter.
They're going to be billed based off their last reading, once the machine...
Correct.
The device is removed, correct?
Right.
So, once it gets calibrated...
And then we also will have the new readings to estimate what the proper average should be, because we can do a lot with these new meters. We can switch from quarterly to monthly. They will tell us when there is excess usage at an address, so that we don't have to wait to see that for a quarter. We'll see it right soon that someone has a problem, could go to their house sooner. Excuse me. And that's the big thing. All the towns around here are doing it now, East Brunswick, North Brunswick.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if someone's meter was running slower...
Right.
That they're not penalized, because we took, what, 15 years to change it today? 20 years?
We're not going to go back.
Okay.
No, you wouldn't be penalized. If it's running slower, it's a benefit.
Yes.
So...
Here's just saying, we're not going to go back and charge them the money that we should have...
Yeah, exactly.
No. Impossible to figure out.
Yeah, let's get that one.
So, anything else? No? All right. We'll have our reports now. Mr. Gindy, you want to start?
I have nothing to report today.
Okay. Mrs. Ballas?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Reminder, this Monday is Memorial Day Parade, starts at the top of Hillside in Maine. Rain or shine. South River Day is again Saturday, June 17th, on Montgomery Street. And the South River Board of Health is running a blood drive Thursday, July 27th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Human Resources Building at 55 Reed Street. While supplies last, you will get a pair of Mets tickets when you donate, so the Mets better keep up their winning ways right now. If you have any questions, you can call 800-933-2566, or to donate and make a schedule, a scheduled appointment, you can go to tinyurl.com/donateblood7-27-23. I have multiple copies of the flyer, so if anybody wants them, I can hand them out. And that's all I have.
Councilman Seula?
Thank you. The Plenary Board is going to have a master plan discussion on June 20th, 7:00 p.m. here at the Criminal Justice Building. Anybody would like to come and speak about it? It'll be again June 20th. And any person out there that wants to volunteer for the EDC, please let our clerk know, so she can notify me. People have dropped out. A lot of people don't want to get involved, a lot of people don't want to volunteer. But again, it's very important that we have the volunteers from the Borough to come out and support the Borough. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
So, with recreation, on June 4th, we have our annual fishing derby that will be held at Grokowski Park. It is on a Sunday. The state allowed us to do it on Saturday or Sunday this year, and due to the bike rodeo on that Saturday, we have pivoted to the Sunday. If you are 16 or older, you do need a fishing license. Our summer rec is open for the summer. We've had to pivot with that as well. We were notified that the Board of Ed will be closing the district on Fridays, so we will now be doing our summer rec program Monday through Thursday. And then Fridays, we are coordinating a park where we can do a special event for the kids to still come out and do something, do something fun. In terms of our spring sports, our flag football, we had a doubleheader yesterday, so if you went by Denny Stadium, it was packed, it was awesome. Everything is going really well, Mayor, and we'll be opening up fall sports any moment now. And the Rec Advisory Board decided to bring back some of the things we did in the past, and we will be going to a Yankee game on June 24th, I believe. So, they'll be publicizing the flyer tomorrow, once everything gets approved tonight. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have too much. The Office on Aging met earlier this... Two weeks ago, and we had a... Thank you. We had a short meeting and everything, too. They have their flea markets, which are only open on a Fridays, though, unfortunately. So, check out their schedule, it's on the website and everything else. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the library, I just want to say they had their Terranium program on May 16th, and it was a huge success. They had 25 spaces, which filled up in one day. I'm sure they will have that program come back again to the library. They are finishing up with their summer programming that they'll be doing in the library, so as soon as I have more information on that, I'll let you guys know. So, the library's doing well. I do want to mention that the Board of Education will have their Curriculum Fair on Thursday, May 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. If anybody's able to stop by, they show you all the programs that they have in the school, all the sports, extracurricular activities, and the curriculum. They will also have a Star Lab down at the middle school gym, which will be there for the remainder of the year for each grade to go down there and be able to learn about the star, so that's fun for them. And the Shade Tree Commission, I know today we discussed the rain garden. I will let the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission talk... I will let the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission talk more about it during his public comment. But it is something that we're looking to do. It can be pushed back to the fall, but we just wanna get everything in place now. So, it is good that we're discussing it, and hopefully, we can have a deeper discussion on it at our next meeting. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments, so we'll move to public comments. You'll be given 10 minutes to come up, ask questions, make comments. Please give your name and address. Mr. Byrne, do you want somebody to bring you the microphone?
No, this is a pretty good machine that I've got used to. It even has a parking brake. All right, so I am Richard Byrne, 11 Bisset Place. I'm your Environmental Commission Chair, South, uh, Craytree, and Green Team. So, first, I wanna talk about our green fair, which was great fun. Really wanna thank our hosts, the St. Peter and Paul Russian Orthodox Church and Father Garrettson, for inviting us there. We had a lot of, uh, we had about 100 people attend. The kids' activities went over very well. Wanna thank, um, well, so our co-chairs were Emily Grasso and Shari Garrettson, and they put the bulk of the effort in the organization. We had Shari White, who's on to be appointed to the commission. She just showed up a couple of weeks ago, coming to meetings. I wanna get involved. She pounded the pavement, putting up our flyers, and solicited businesses. And we also had Joe Highland, who helped solicit our discount partners, who was Campazino, Portuguese Fisherman, Baker Squared, and the Venue by Supreme. And Main Street Forest gave us free flowers, too. Councilman Gindy was able to get Carpoint Auto Group, Prospect Street, Tuck River, to lend us an electric vehicle to display. And I wanna thank Adriano for sending Gary Knoblock over, who was there to collect used computers. And he went above and beyond. He was helping us set up the tents. I would like for you to express our appreciation directly to him, when you get the chance, please. And, yeah, you know, hopefully, next year, we've learned, one thing I learned, book your food truck six months in advance. Yes. Okay, we learned that. So, that was that. Our, yeah, so unfortunately, Sustainable Jersey decided not to award us the grant for the four rain gardens, but Dorian Kerber, who's on her way here now, so she'll, she's got all the information. So, she was able to arrange with Rutgers Water Resources Program. They're gonna give us the supplies. I was told that all we need Public Works to do is excavate out the, it's compacted soil. It would take us years to chop it out with shovels. But, I don't know. I haven't seen the detailed plans or anything. Dorian wants to arrange a meeting with all the stakeholders, so we can get everybody on the same page, and then decide if we wanna go forward with it. So, take off that hat and put on my, I'm a resident and concerned citizen. So, I saw this violation notice with the NJDEP. And I work for the government, state of New Jersey. And I have a problem with the way the state does things, because virtually every paragraph in this report, no, this is a notice of violation notice. Almost every paragraph, every word in it is prescribed by New Jersey DEP regulations. And it provides very little in the amount of information that people would be interested in to make informed decisions on how to handle the water in their homes. So, from the Susan Lawyer article in CentralJersey.com, apparently, Mr., what was his name, Furry of Aggra, was interviewed. And he said that the copper levels exceeded the action level of 1.3 parts per million in the first half of 2022. So, should I take that to mean that the copper levels stopped exceeding at the end of June and are now normal?
As you understand, the DB requires us, they give us 60 addresses, and we leave, we leave a bottle for the people, even we test that water. I believe in the first half, out of the 60, there were eight homes that tested over the limit. The DEP didn't ask us to go in and see if they had copper piping, didn't ask us anything, didn't give us a notice. The second half, the next 60, two houses had above the limit.
I read the regulations. I work for the state, and I have an innate ability to decode them. So, the regulations state, you have to test in persons' homes from their taps and test for lead and copper and a couple of other things. So, when 10% of the samples exceed 1.3 parts per million, that's the action level. So, you just said eight out of 60, which is 12%. So, that's what triggered, now, the interesting part of the regulations, is the borough was not obligated to notice the public at the time the tests showed that it's not in the regulations. It's, you don't have to. It's not a dangerous level, and no action needed to be taken at that time. Why did we get a violation notice? Not because the copper exceeded the level, but because paperwork wasn't filed on time. And, so, like, the two things are, uh, what is it called? Corrosion Management Plan and Source Water Treatment Plan. Now, I remember from the last meeting, you talking about, you're moving from a lime-based pH control system to a phosphoric acid-based. I'm gonna fall. Correct? I mean, I remember you joking about, you're worried about a, that's ominous sounding.
Phosphoric acid.
Look at a bottle of Coke. Phosphoric, it's a food preservative.
Phosphoric.
Right, so, but it manages the pH, and managing the pH is the corrosion control. So, essentially, you're already doing the plan, the long-term plan, to fix the problem. Right? So, the plan is already in motion, but the paperwork wasn't filed on it. So, that's all this means, right? And it mentions lead. Why does, why does, no lead was detected above the action level. In fact, you look at the report, we have lead nowhere near the action, like, 1/10 of the action level. So, why is lead mentioned in this notice? Well, because the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Regulations require you to. There's no lead. But you still gotta say this.
Yeah, that's just a boilerplate notice.
It's, I work for the company, so...
Right.
And by the way, Facebook lights up with people ranting and ranting, and I'm the only guy who shows up. So, it does warm my heart to see so many people actually come out, because this is worth talking about. Thank you. Thank you. So, yeah, like, all these instructions on how to reduce the amount of copper coming out of your tap. The copper doesn't come from the water. It's only in trace elements in well water and even lower trace elements in the surface water. It comes from acid in the water pulling copper out of the copper oxide coating in the copper pipes in your house. It doesn't come from the borough's pipes. Those are ductile iron pipes. So, you know, run the water for 15 seconds. The clean water comes from the iron pipes, and now the water, because it sits there for eight hours, you come home from work, and that's how it leaches into the water in the copper pipes. And you, virtually turn it on, you get a, but, but, this was 11 months ago. And, but, so, here's my problem. I understand how to convert regulation and, um, the legalese into common language explanations, because I've been doing it for years. At DCA, we get regulation, I'm a computer programmer, so I write the reports, notices that get printed. I do the design of the reports. And I'm like, we need to better explain this, because you're gonna get 2,500 calls 48 hours after we mail this notice, and they don't listen to me, and the phones are ringing off the hook. Oh, write, uh, write another letter and we'll send it. Okay, yeah, you should've listened to me. So, this is not an emergency. Personally, if I were mayor, I would've written, and I'm disjointed because I'm all worked up over this, so... Usually, I don't get worked up, so...
Okay, and just come to the point.
I would've done a comprehensive, plain-language explanation of what was, what happened and the need-to-know stuff that was not included in this notice. And I would've posted it concurrently with this, because, you know, I don't know. John Q. Public gets the wrong impression from this. And so, um, I, you know, I wanna help make things better, so...
Appreciate it.
More clear, common language explanation of this stuff is what we need, so...
Okay. Thank you for your time. One thing I will ask of, that you did not ask. The matter with the copper has been resolved. We've taken other...
Our testing since the first test in the first quarter detected underneath the levels. We test for that, not only on their half-a-year program. We test for that every couple of weeks in different locations throughout the town. And the levels are fine. The reason the report wasn't going, we were looking for different methods on how to attack the whole program. And as you see tonight, you have the first reading of a bond. Can't get anybody to do anything until the money's in place. So, that is $950,000 for us to come up and implement a plan, which will include doing work on piping, doing work on the chemicals, but you can't do anything. I can't have consultants doing any work until the money is available for them to do it. We're not allowed to do by, by law unless the money is available.
Not all of it will be done to, you know...
We hope not.
Put a sleeve through there, because, you know, at $150 a foot, that's $742,000 per mile. So, that'd be eating it all up, I mean, just in the most worst places, it'll be done.
So, there's still meetings and conversations going on, the most economical way to do it.
Will the report be given to the DEP by the 31st? It has to be.
We asked for an extension. They said they're not allowed to give extensions. Get it to us as soon as you can. There were no penalties. There were no dollar penalties or anything with it. So, we're trying our best. Maybe we could take an indication that we had the first reading tonight and tell them that, so...
Tell them something, so that they can put it into their file.
Right. They're coming to visit us on Thursday.
Okay.
First time in two, three years.
Okay, very good. Anyone else, please come. Your name, address, 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Dan Cenelli. I reside at 16 Alexander Court. I'll start off with, I'm not from New Jersey originally. I'm not from South River. I've been here for six years by happenstance, and so here I am. I'm a retired veteran, 22 years, U.S. Army. I've lived all over the world. I've lived in various, many, four different countries. Traveled all over, lived in big cities, small towns such as South River. And, so, let me, let me, so, we all know about the yellow water thing, right? This is new, a nuance to me. It's an anomaly to me. I've never ever experienced it anywhere that I've lived. People, you know, I am one of the people that are on Facebook. But I'll tell you, I am the con mind on Facebook, because I understand what people use Facebook to do, right? A lot of people go on there just to complain, but they won't come to a venue such as this, right? So, I get it. People just, you know, that's, that's their way. You can weed through. People are showing photos today of the yellow water, right? I understand the fire thing that happened. That's a nuance. Mr. Mayor, I came across a video of yours being interviewed in 2019, where you addressed that this was an issue in 2019. So, I guess my question is, like, what is being done, right? On your website, where it talks about when the hydrants are gonna be flushed, I found it very interesting. At the bottom, it suggested, "Don't do laundry during that time." But it doesn't say anything about, "Don't shower, don't drink it," you know, nothing about that. We're worried about the clothes, but we're not worried about our health. That's the message that I get from what's posted on there. I'm not suggesting that's what the real message is, but that's what there. I spoke with Mr. Lindowski, actually, about this, and I call. I like to educate myself, right? And so, you brought up some very good points to this, and actually, I actually have that notification. And no, it's not a legal requirement for you to post it, to share it with your residents in your community, but why wouldn't you, to this gentleman's point? Why would you not comprehend? Because it's out there, and it can be misleading. And I'll just paraphrase, well, I'll just read what it says at the very bottom. "For more information, please contact Arthur Lindowski." And it says, "Please share this information with all the other people who drink this water, especially those who may not have received this notice directly. For example, people in apartments, nursing homes, schools, and businesses." "You can do this by posting this notice in a public place or distributing copies in, by hand or in mail." How hard is that? I sent you an email. I called twice and left two voicemails. I heard nothing. I don't understand that. I, I respect your busy. I'm not respecting a phone call the very next day or the next minute, or an email response, or, or, you know... Mr. Lindowski took some serious time in explaining to me and educating a lot of this stuff, which I greatly appreciated. I also had spoken prior to him to somebody else in the water department, I can't remember that gentleman's name, very professional, educating me. But that's not the answer. You're our leader, right? You've been elected to represent us. If somebody reaches out, takes, listen, again, I'm not asking for, like, overnight, but not to get a response, I'm a little disappointed. I'll share that with you. One of the concerns, as you brought up the water meaning, meter thing, I just kinda took some notes here. Whoops, sorry. You mentioned that if it's, if the water runs slower, it's a benefit to that resident, right? When it's switched out, right? That's, that's kinda the takeaway I got. But how do we know what that resident may be owed if it's been running faster? How's that gonna, how did, like, me, I don't know if it's me or not. I have no clue. But how would I know?
When we send the meters out to be tested, if they come back and tell us something is running faster, we will take that to respect with the new meter, and if adjustment has to be made, a credit will be made.
I mean, how would I even know? Like, how would I even know to ask or, how do I, and I say this softly, but where's the trust? How do I know and trust that you're gonna contact me and go, "Hey, Mr. Cenelli, we, your meter's been running fast. We owe, what steps are in place to identify?"
If you, if you see a...
Yes, a change in my...
Big difference in your bill...
Right.
Then you should call us, and we start an investigation.
So, you're leaving it up to the resident to reach out to you?
Well, right, right now, our system doesn't tell us which ones look...
So, my question is, obviously, the entire town is not in here. How would, you know, there's a lot of people out here that English is probably not their first language, right? Their education, let alone, you know, is probably not, they're not probably active, whether it's on social media or on the website. How are we notifying them, right? Pay attention to your water bill. Please pay attention to it. There may be a change as we switch out. If it goes up, right, if your, if your bill goes up, and then there was an issue on that side. If your bill goes down, there was an issue on the other side. How are we educating and notifying the residents of the town?
But to that point, when I know when the process starts.
Right.
I don't know when we're gonna start. After the installation, I would guess that we will include something in the last quarterly water bill, saying, "If your bill is different than your previous ones, please contact the office for an explanation."
I would submit to you, you should probably suggest them to monitor it beforehand. A lot of people, because I don't think on your website, I can go and look at the history of my water bill. There's something, your, your whole website and your whole thing is archaic, but that's another...
Chief of Resilience, I'm sorry.
When meters run slow, they're not gonna run fast.
Right.
So, meters last about 20 years, the useful life of a meter.
Sure.
A lot of meters in town are about 50 years old, 60 years old. No one's meter is gonna run fast, so when you get a new meter, and it's probably gonna be, it's gonna be an active read. It's not gonna be a slow read. So, no one's bill should go the other way. It's gonna probably go higher, but you're getting a more accurate read.
So, again, to that, because that could be a shock factor to people, right? You might want... You might want to let them know before you go and do the switch because people need to plan. It's an economic, you know, we're going through a crisis. We know, you know, things are changing. I'd like, I'm on a, I'm retired. I'm on a fixed budget right now. I'd like to know in advance, "Hey, your water bill may increase." I get it, you can't tell me an exact dollar figure, but it may increase a certain amount. Be prepared for it, or it may not. But, but to do that, to submit that information after the fact, I think is.
You bring up a very good point, and when we send out the notice that people are going to be coming to change your meters, in that same notice, we can put something, once the meter is changed.
I would suggest.
If you see a big difference in your bill, please contact the office.
I would suggest that.
I mean, we're going to see, we're going to get reports ourselves.
Absolutely.
That a meter is reading differently, and then we usually send out the water department.
You would know it's tied to my house?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Every meter has a.
It's all automated now.
Right.
It's going to be able to show residents if there's a leak instead of waiting three months to get a bill. Where we've had numerous people come to town, "Oh, why do I go live, because you have a leak?" You'll be able to tell immediately. You'll be able to see your usage daily, where you can then make adjustments to when you're using more water and so forth. When everything's going to be automated, you'll be able to see things in real time.
Okay. And then finally, I'd just like to address, which, you know, the mayor kind of addressed, this May 31st deadline. I understand this, as we explained, is not a, you know, an end all be all, you know, world is coming to the end with the water testing. But you do, you already missed it, and then you're going to miss the May 31st.
We don't know that yet.
Well, okay.
We're trying.
But you don't know that you're not. You don't know you're not.
It's a good possibility.
That's literally what you told the mayor, right?
It's a good possibility. In hindsight, when we missed the original one, we should have asked for an extension at that time, which from their letter that we asked for an extension for, for this time.
Sure.
Basically says, "Get it to us as soon as you can."
But.
But that's not an extension.
But my, my point is, these things shouldn't happen, right? There, we should meet deadlines, right? We should, we should submit, Doc, listen, this is just me. Fortunately, well, not fortunately, but I, my VA rating doesn't require me to pay taxes here. I'm 100% VA disability, so I don't have, but if I did, I'd probably be speaking even more passionately than I already am, right? Because there are other people that are paying their tax dollars for you to do your job, for you to do your job, for you to do your job, right? What I've noticed in those Facebook posts, right? And again, I, I take part of it, as I mentioned to you on the phone, you know, there is some grain of salt to be taken. But just in the six years, in the house that I bought, I rented it for four years beforehand. So that landlord has been in South River for a long period of time. And it's, the leadership seems to be lacking. I'll be transparent, I'll be honest with that, from my view, in some areas. And this is evident by saying that we may not meet this deadline and that we missed this report. How, how minor it may or may not be in your world, the way this reads to me, it's, it's not minor in my world, and it's not minor probably in these people's world. As well as going back to the yellow water again, and I just want to end on this, and then I'll let you finish, is that again, I've lived, I've talked to people that live in other counties, in other towns in New Jersey, Montclair. And again, I understand the infrastructure and I understand the dollars that are in some of those areas, but I have people in Perthamboy and so. I asked them, "Hey, does your water ever turn yellow?" And they looked at me like, "What?" So it might be a South River issue, might be an East Brunswick issue, as it was kind of explained to me, or whatever it is, but what is being done, right? Because people are saying it's been going on for years and years and years and years. Are we, is, is that just okay? That's just the way it is, and so we're not, we're going to spend money on other stuff versus our infrastructure to deal with healthy drinking water. Do you want to be the next Flint, Michigan, or the next Mississ, Jackson, Mississippi? I leave that in your minds.
Yeah, thank you. One question that I had was, I thought we were required to put that notice up on the website.
No.
No?
Put it on the website, but even Richard said, didn't require notice to the public.
The levels, the levels exceeded that, was not required to be noted.
Right.
Except in the annual water quality report, which isn't out yet.
Right.
For 2022.
As soon as we got the notice, we put it on the borough website.
Okay.
This is the violation notice. That had to be posted in.
Right.
That's what I was referring to. The violation notice has to be a point, right? Okay, so that was put out there.
There was no notice to individually notify every person in town.
Well, no, because it was, the matter was resolved almost immediately.
That normally comes with a boil your water, don't drink your water.
No.
They never told us not to, they never told us to boil the water, not drink the water.
You've not even submitted the, that's what that letter said.
Planning to delay, so. You're talking about something, you're not having these for delay, so how are you not planning on delaying that?
Takes time, takes money.
Well, that's what it comes down to.
Well, why don't you come up?
How you doing? I'm Jonathan DeWes. We reside at 6 Monash Street.
I'm Kristen DeWes, hello.
So we've been dealing with this yellow water for years now. Everybody's going to ignore it, everybody's going to deny it.
I've looked at two different addresses too in South River. Top of the Hill, James Street, never, ever, ever experienced it there, and that was 37 years, and I moved down here and I'm like, "What is going on?" I can't even keep whites. I can't. I don't even buy them. There's no point. You guys came and delivered like some stuff to our address a couple of weeks ago or whatever, which means that you guys are obviously having this issue all over town or maybe part of town. I think it's maybe south of the train tracks that seems like people are having the issue. So why don't we just focus the money on the places that are having the problems? And I spoke to Mike Smith. He had told us some fabricated story about an issue that we were having on Rose Street and John, that there was some natural sprain, something like that. And then thankfully, Arthur did call me back. I did not hear from you, Mr. Krenzel, about there being a valve broken. A week later, people were there.
They were digging up the road.
Improvements digging the road, but not a peep from anybody on what was going on, why it was happening. Obviously, he knew what was going on because there was a problem.
We only notified, we only notified the public when there's going to be a shutdown. There was no shutdown of your water.
It did, it did give us notices. The day before, there was going to be shut down for hours, and I mean, it was disgusting.
When it looks like somebody urinated in my, in my sink when I try to wash my hands, it's unacceptable.
This was more like blood red in, in my bathroom.
And then we did an installation.
Of some other system too on Amherst, whatever that you had.
And your water cleared.
Not really. It's still, it's not clear.
Well, that's.
Either way, the clearance.
That's because we received a complaint.
Why does it smell like the pool every time I go to brush my teeth, take a shower, or wash my face?
I get the shower, I'm starting to horny, it smells like.
You're the only one on Monash Street. We normally get a lot of people calling us constantly since we put in that line into stormwater.
The thing that really.
You have to keep the water running on Monash Street.
Yeah, I see that, because you guys are running the water constantly through the sewer.
That's correct.
So you're going to go and try to raise our water bill as yet you're wasting water like that.
You don't pay for that water. We pay for that water, and we have to spend money to do things correctly.
So that's a key, the year old things that are old.
If you let me talk, what we're in the process of doing is cleaning that line by letting that water open. As soon as we've done it where we're getting clean water, we're going to start reducing the amount of time that line will be open.
May I ask you a question? Why aren't you replacing these water lines? Why are we talking about AstroTurf fields instead of replacing our infrastructure?
Our pipes had to be replaced under our house four years ago.
Were we talking about AstroTurf fields?
We were just talking about Astro, we just voted on an AstroTurf field in school.
That's border damage.
Town money is town money, you know. We're spending taxes on that and our infrastructure.
You have a target area. If you would have heard the last meeting, you are the target area.
The whole town should be the target area.
No, the whole town does not have problems.
It shouldn't be.
It should be the.
It's a health issue.
And as you heard last meeting, it's $150 a foot to clean and reline.
So then everybody should just move immediately.
It has to be done, doesn't it? Doesn't it have to be done?
Well.
What's, what's the plan going forward?
We are looking at different things to do.
What's the plan to fix it, though, going forward to solve the problem?
We're working on it.
And if we have a little bit of money each year and one road was replaced or two roads are replaced each year, why isn't it focused on the roads that are having pipe issues that are 60 miles?
No.
It has to start at some point, though.
We're 2 miles from a town hall, aren't we, like?
We looked at it at.
Think about it.
60 miles of pipe, I don't, I mean.
You were right when you said when, where it is. We asked people to complain. Over 40 people did. It's in your area. It's there. By the way, where is 6? Is it towards the Portuguese Center?
Port Jesus.
Towards, okay, on that side? Okay, yeah. Because it defies logic. I know people who live on, by Prospect, and that they get brown water. Why do they get brown water if they're higher? Shouldn't it go down where it's lower? That whole area is there.
Well, again, if our pipes had to be replaced because they were rotted out and rusted out, and ours is one of the oldest houses on the block, I would just imagine that all the area has to be replaced. So that's really.
I just don't see any solution going forward. It's just a lot of fixtures, a lot of bandages.
You have to weigh a couple of things. We're looking at relining and cleaning. Problem with that is, you start touching those old pipes to reline them, we're probably going to have more water may breaks.
But what's, why can't you start to replace instead of reline? Instead of putting a bandage on.
Because then you got to repave the roads, you got to, the cost of that is much more than relining.
Cost, that's the point. It's infrastructure.
Right, and again, we're talking.
It's millions of dollars.
Okay, so it is what it is.
So you're willing, your taxes go up by a ton to do that.
So what's the plan?
Well, you're replacing the water meters is going to increase some people's cost in water, so is that going to help the problem?
Hopefully not. Hopefully their meters are running fine.
You're, you're, you want to drive your citizens out of the town because you can't provide clean, safe, healthy drinking water.
We are providing.
I have cleaner drinking water in St. Lucia than I have in South River.
And Jamaica.
And the story, right? Third world countries.
Thank you for what he was getting at, Joe, and thank you for your service.
Okay, anybody over here? You came?
So, Dora Devast, you know, 46 Wilson Avenue. I've lived in South River for 35 years. I went to high school here. I would just add, I don't have anything else to add other than the other residents, but I would just add, to the extent that you can keep the residents abreast of what's going on, I think people would be more comfortable with the progress that's being made, whether it's the testing of the water, you know, whatever you're doing, because otherwise you're going to continue to have people coming to meetings, and we're just not sure what's going on as far as treating the water, changing the pipes, whatever you, you have, has to be done. So that's the only thing I want to add.
Okay.
And, and we are getting brown water. We're right below the train tracks.
On Wilson?
Yes, 46 Wilson.
Mayor, where do you live?
I live on 42.
I live in the front of you.
Yeah.
You have brown water?
No.
Stranger than, my hair has looked like, like pee. I, sometimes, three, four, five days, my house, no laundry, no cooking, no shower, nothing. I use the bottled water. I pay my bill, plus I pay the bills for like a shopping, that's just water.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. Yes, anybody over here? Go, yes?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Joe Donato. I live in South River here, 30 Daly Street. I'm a life, lifetime resident. And it seems to me, everybody's talking about all kinds of stuff. No plan is put in place. This is, this water problem has been going on, and I haven't been involved in a lot of stuff. I kept myself out of it, but even I knew we had a water problem in this town, and it's gotten worse over the years. Okay, you're going to rip up a road and you're going to have, when you put the water line in. Fine, you got to replace, that's the best way to do it. Fix your infrastructure underneath that road, and then pave the road. We're paving on a heck of a lot of roads. Oh, by the way, I've been asking for years to have my road paved. So far, I have gotten nothing. But I'll tell you what, don't pave my road. Take that money, put it in, get this water problem straightened out. There's a plan to it, you got to find out where the problems are, which means you might have to go and find someone to do the testing. Mr. Crotch would know about that better than I, and start a plan showing where everything is and where the worst parts, parts are, and where they're going to be addressed first. Not haphazard going here and there. You got to have a plan. So far, you've come up with nothing, which is very disappointing. I've been in this, in this field, I work for the county, and I'm involved in a lot of projects. One of them, Main Street here in, in South River. Perfect opportunity to have taken care of that. If you, if the water, water main, on Main Street is the problem, you could have gotten involved with that, with the county. As it is, we're at the 11th and a half hour. We're, we're not too far away from going to construction. To do that now on the municipal level is going to jeopardize county funding from the state or whatever it is we're getting funding from. So it's kind of late to be doing that. Should have been done when you first found out about the project back in 2019, maybe 2018, somewhere's around there. It's not being done. So you got, it's got to take charge of this stuff. You've got an engineer, you've got Mr. Lindensky, you have a lot of professionals here. All you have to do is tell them, "Let's get moving on this," and they'll move on it. But until it comes out from everyone here, it's not going to happen. Suggest you get to it as soon as possible. We're years behind. It's going to cost us a lot more now than it would have done 15, 20 years ago when this first started coming up. Stop paving your roads. Put the money into doing a road, doing your, your infrastructure, getting that all straightened out, then pave the road. You don't have to worry about it for maybe another 100 years. But until you start doing that, it's not going to be taken care of, and the citizens of this town are going to be paying a heck of a lot more as time goes by than if we've addressed it from the very beginning. So I get excited too when I get worked up. But I, I'm tired of hearing BS. Let's start doing something.[1587.71] With that, I'll sit down.
May I just ask something? I ask for me, I don't know, for us people, but I now use, sometimes I don't use the water, yes? But I pay my bill. I don't have the discount the days I don't use the water, my bill.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, but... Yes, but sometimes the water is like sp, I don't use the water. I pay the water, but I don't use.
Mayor, if I may? In the past, Mr. Donato just brought up, it's been going on. Well, the previous administrations that didn't do the right thing back then is now affecting us now. Listen to me. There was a well that was destroyed... That was temporarily out of service. The previous administration spent three hundred thousand-plus dollars to repair that well, when they were told that it was gonna last three years. Well, the well lasted three and a half years, and it cost the borough residents one point two million to replace that well. If it was replaced when it was originally put out of service, it wouldn't have cost that much money. So this has been going on, like you said, for years, okay? Yes, because previous administrations didn't do anything. This is why. Every time we get together and we... You're done talking, I'm talking now.
Hold on, just relax. Chill out. Relax.
Shut up. I'm not talking to you.
Hey, sir, sir.
I'm just saying. No, I'm just saying, this was done...
All right, all right. I said, "All right."
This was done previously when things weren't being done properly years ago. And then we're trying to get things done now. We spent four-plus million dollars on the water treatment plant in the last couple of years? This is the water treatment plant, because there was problems in the treatment plant. We spent all this money over the last few years to get it up and running. When Agfa was here the other day, or last meeting, I should say, they said the treatment plant was now at a hundred percent. It was perfect. So now, that's working properly. Now we have to start working on the district... Oh, excuse me, the distribution side. So you can't put bad water into clean pipes. You have to fix the original problem first. So the treatment plant is now up and running. So now we have to work on the distribution side, as Mr. Landuski said. Now we have to start looking at relining the pipes, finding the valves that were bad, and start replacing all of this. But from the past of not being done, it's... Yes, it's a thing that's been going on for a long time. I lived on Monush Street years ago, and it was a slight problem once in a while, but it always went away. But now, over the years, there was a valve, I believe, that was closed up there. Age, if you... Correct me if it was on Prospect? Monush and Amherst, it was closed, so it was making like a dead end, and that's what was backing everything up. So therefore, now we have to take care of that problem, and we know it's on that end of town. So little by little, we're starting to work this, but also, we don't want to put a major league tax increase on the borough residents, because as the mayor said, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a foot. So we're trying to address the problems at that area and then go forward. So if we could work on that end of the town and move forward with this, it's clean water coming in. So once we correct that problem, it's gonna be a lot better. I understand that, but to try and, like he's saying, dig up the streets, put the new water lines in, you're talking... We're trying to... That's why we're trying to line the pipes.
So is there a way that you can at least tell the residents, like, hey, we worked on this street, this street, and this street? You guys should see improvements. If you're not, again, tell...
Yeah, well, maybe what we do is if...
We called, because the one number that was advertised wasn't even in service. It was like eh eh eh. Then I emailed somebody, and then they kindly forwarded it to Art, and he called me.
Well, Age, could we have the water department send something to Adam so he could post it onto the Borough Communication webpage so residents can go onto that page and see it?
Is the best policy in this situation?
Well, it's something... I'm still learning about the...
The infrastructure's failing all over America. It's not just Stafford.
Age, is there some way we could do that, for the residents to be able to go onto the Facebook Communication page? And, you know, be able for the residents to go on a page and see where they're working, what's going on, and all this kind of stuff? We have the page.
Well, even that, why wasn't that notification put out on a nixle or something like that? I mean, the whole thing with developmental delays in children is alarming and all hell.
I will meet with Age and the Water Department, and I will see how we can try going to get it posted onto the Facebook page and get that going, so everybody's in communication then, and we can work it, so everybody's aware of it. And then if they're working on your street, we could put out the nixle, and we could put it on the webpage that, yes, this is what's happening on this day. But I promise you, I will work on that, and hopefully I'll have an answer for you at the next meeting.
One of the things that is in the works that COVID stopped was the idea of elevating the water utility to that of the electric utility. The idea has been going on seemingly forever of putting in the new meters. They are key to creating the water sewer utility. With the new meters, we will then be able to go and have a separate water sewer utility, where you will be billed differently so that it can be taken out of the current fund. Because mixed in with all of this is the fact that the MCUA charges us for cleaning the water and to doing things that go up one year, and I mean up like a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, erects havoc with our budget. So we are planning on doing that. That is part of the plan. As far as going in and trying to figure out why that area is, my concern is, suppose that has nothing to do with our roads in South River, but that it's coming from the county roads in Prospect, in Olbridge Turnpike, the nightmare that would be of trying to figure that out. And that is what everybody is trying to work on, trying to do. So it's not like we're not doing anything. We're just about to spend nine hundred and fifty thousand of your dollars. And I agree. When I hear... When I do walk up there on Monush, I do listen to the people, and they don't give a damn about their taxes. Fix the problem. It has to be fixed. And if it means that every year we're going to have to go block by block, tear up the road, put in the new pipe, then that is how we will slog through the whole thing. We will start at the top of... At the bottom of Rose and work our way through John, up Monush, down Hollander, and just keep doing it. If that's what needs to be done, then that is what we will do.
I'll check with the postie.
Okay. Let's see, I was going this way. Anyone there? 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 Yes. Please, come forward, because normally we don't do that, but I want people to talk.
Just so everybody's understanding, I didn't put... Point the finger at the blame game. Don't do that. You guys need to work and get this stuff resolved. I don't care how it came about, whether it was twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago.
Just wanted to explain it.
You guys... That's a common... I take that over the years as to be an excuse. Okay, let's stop the excuses. Let's start working together and actually get something accomplished. We're not doing it by sitting here arguing with each other. Okay? It's time that we start doing things together. Haven't seen that yet. So things are gonna have to change in order for them to get better. Thank you.
Anyone along here?
Emily Grasso, thirteen Daro Street. Hi. So I've lived here thirty-five years on Daro Street, and the only time we have yellow water is when they flush the hydrants, so we are very blessed. But listening to everybody in this room talk about how they have yellow water, I've been on... You know, you're from South River Facebook page, and that is a big issue. So something I'm gonna say, I hear from friends, people in the surrounding towns, we have really low taxes, which is very nice, but water is like a basic need. And if we need to raise the taxes, you know, a hundred dollars per however it works, do it. Even though it doesn't affect me, raise my taxes so we can raise the quality of the water. Oh, yeah, I did have a question. What does it take to line the pipes? What is that process involved?
A long process. You have to disconnect all the services to the house. You have to run above-ground water lines. You have to then put the above-ground water lines into the house so that they maintain water. And then the company, Mr. Koch should know better about this, believe they go through hydrants to clean it and then line it, or they just cut it.
Excavated intersections, usually removing valves in the long run.
My concern... My concern is we have to weigh what we're doing, if we're doing that, with the condition of the pipes that we're doing it to, which would be, do we replace them or do we line them?
That's my point.
And that's an engineering thing. I'm not an engineer, so...
You have been... You did replace pipes in various projects.
Right. Might be a combination. I know that when they took out the valves, supposedly there was a piece of pipe that they have down DPW. The four-inch pipe is about three-quarter inch in diameter, and the rest of it is rust.
But my point is, if it's not that much more, it sounds like there's a lot involved in even relining the pipes. So why not spend extra money and just replace them? And like I said, you know, go street by street.
I don't know if everybody would be in the same belief of you raise our taxes as opposed to fix our water.
Clean water. You know, and like I said, we have the lowest taxes in a lot of the surrounding towns, and that's been a blessing for all of us. But you know what? We need clean water. So, thank you.
That's one of the ideas of what the water utility would do, the water sewer utility, is that that would be in control of that. It wouldn't be affecting all of the taxpayers. It'd be affecting those that use the water, and that's how that would be done. At least that is the plan. Okay? Moving along, moving along. Anywhere here, Sal?
...Cuccio, one of Olbridge Turnpike. About a year ago, I came up to you guys after the bipartisan infrastructure bill had passed. I asked you, did you guys apply for anything? Did you guys do anything? Did you guys... Infrastructure is a water. Am I correct? Okay, state of New Jersey had gotten a hundred and eighty-six billion for infrastructure. Did we put a plan together and maybe apply for this stuff? Was any of that done?
We got ARPA money from the American Rescue Plan of one...
That was COVID, I believe.
One point six million dollars.
That was COVID. I'm talking about the infrastructure.
No, 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 no. We got ARPA money for sewer and water improvements to the tune of one point six million dollars.
Okay, so what was done with the water then, besides the treatment plants? Are we... Do we have a plan?
First of all, we only got half of it. We get half last year, half this year.
Okay, so...
So you don't have enough to do it until you get both halves.
You guys have a plan together? Like an actual plan to town of how we would do section by section of replacing the water in case there's a... Maybe money out there to get, so you can present it? Because I understand how you get grants and stuff. You have to have something in place in order to show it to them so they can take it into consideration. Do we have something like that in this town yet? Because I'm telling you, I live up on Olbridge Turnpike. I have had yellow water without fire hydrants or anything, and it's a shock. I wish I still had the picture on my phone with bright yellow compared to a glass of water. And recently...
Where... Now, where are you?
Olbridge Turnpike, all the way up on top, one oh four, right next to the Philo Lodge.
Okay.
And also, state of New Jersey has also put a bipartisan bill for one billion dollars for Clean Water Act. Do we have a plan for that? Or... That's my next question, because we're pushing over the next twenty years, thirty billion dollars is going into the Clean Water Act in... For the state of New Jersey. Are we applying for stuff now, putting proposals together, so we can actually go to our county, go up to Murphy, say, "Look, we have a problem in South River with the water. How can you help us?" Do we have a plan together for that? Or are we just waiting and saying, "Well, it's... It'll get better eventually"?
Whenever we get grants, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, because this comes from Mr. Landuski, when we hear that there are grants out there, we do apply for whatever we can get.
Okay, have you guys gone to the county and asked for anything yet? Just ask the county to reach out to help us. Middlesex County. Have we asked them for money?
Do we ask them for money?
Can we?
For water and sewer, no.
Well, have you guys talked to them about the problem we're having in town?
No.
Why not?
We'll have to. It's our water.
So...
County doesn't supply water.
Okay, the point is, the county has been giving out money to other towns for stadiums and everything else. So you're telling me we can't ask the county for money to help our town?
We asked the county for money, not for water and sewer. We asked them for other things.
Okay, and what do you guys get back? No?
Usually.
So why don't you keep asking them until they're tired of it?
We right now asked them for a million and a half dollars. We haven't heard from them in eight weeks.
Okay. One other question, Mrs. Hula. You keep saying the prior administration.
Right.
Can you explain to me which one that is?
This is going back... I forget when the number two well went down. Yeah, it was...
So what, can you guys give me a range of what administration that was?
No, I don't remember. I know it was a long time ago.
Okay, so the question is, I'm not against you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm not saying. No, I mean, it's all of them.
You've been up here for twelve years.
Yeah.
So the question is, even though you don't... You guys didn't have control for two years, out of the last eighteen years, why are we blaming prior administrations when half of you were up there? No, you were up there at one time. Donna Ballas was up there one time. Peter Gindy was up there one time. Julie has been up there for X amount of years. You've been up here. So you're blaming yourselves, basically, it sounds like, because you guys ain't doing it.
It was... It was the... There was a majority. I can't remember when it was, but I know specifically...
Two years. Okay, I'm gonna explain this to you. Two years, the Democrats had control, and after they lost control, you guys blamed everything that went wrong on them for the two years they had control. You guys didn't take credit for anything you didn't do the prior years. Okay?
I'll try and research it back.
I'm telling you, I'm here for every council meeting. I see what goes on. The problem is, you guys come in and you just wanna blame the prior administration. When they were trying to make the town better, you attacked them for painting a walkway to make it brighter so residents don't have to be afraid that it's dark, and Mr. Appinger complained about it. Why? They're trying to make the town better and safer, but everything they did, you guys are like, well, they didn't do anything. Two years of control. That's all I'm gonna say. Good night.
Okay. And as I said before, you know, all the time, it's been a problem with the water and the water utility. Now it's going to be elevated, and it's, you know, wonderful COVID stomped in. And then on top of that, we went out for the water meters. We expected it to be one price. When we did it, what was it, over double? Was it double the price?
It was over the two million that we put aside.
Yeah, we put two million dollars aside, and it was over then on that.
The meters doubled.
Yeah, the meters doubled, so...
COVID does not stop planning. I understand you couldn't do interact on it. COVID does not stop planning. You have no plan.
So, anyone else?
Can I ask, is there anything that we can do? Can we complain to anybody? Is there anyone that you guys know of that we should be emailing to or...
I put it in a call to the state senator, and I also requested a complaint to EPA a couple of weeks ago.
Because I know you're saying Middlesex County wouldn't be doing anything, but...
Bonnie Watson Coleman. That's our Congresswoman. Yes, sir.
Shawn Hauserman, two eleven Willard Avenue.
No offense, I figured I was gonna keep you last, because I figured you're gonna come up here and you'll put the cherry on everything.
Last and the least, I understand.
Nah, nah.
So what I'm getting from what's going on here is, at the last meeting, Mr. Koch, the engineer, had mentioned that while he was in Spotswood, they did their lining, right? They did a project to take care of all this. So Spotswood, half of our size, has been working on this for years. The notice, again, many of the people here came and said, "Why didn't we find out about it? Why does the notice say, 'Hey, please give some people notice of the notice, because we don't want to notify them'?" And you said you posted it finally on the Borough website. You didn't use a nixle. It would have been nice to have a nixle. Everybody's connected to nixle. Every time there's a water main break, we get a nixle. You didn't use the reverse nine-one-one, which, Mayor, you're on there every summer telling us it's hot. Please be careful when you're using your air conditioners, electric, you know, we may not have enough. You could have done that. But you said you posted it on the Borough website. So I have the Borough website right here, and here's your challenge for my next nine and a half minutes. Somebody find it.
I couldn't even find a time for this meeting today.
Right. So here's the thing. Ms. Landuski and Mayor, and again, this is also in a way directed to you, Councilman Gindy, because you're the chairman of the Utilities Committee. I know we had a discussion a couple of meetings ago that you gave a report last year that nobody actually remembered. But I'm surprised that you haven't had a meeting of the Utilities Committee. You know, maybe this is the time that you hold a public meeting, just like this, of the subcommittee, so that people could talk. And if you did do it, I'd love to hear the report. That's fantastic. How much in tonight's meeting has been appropriated to clean and line the bad pipes? I know none of you can answer. This is the CFO, by the way. This is Joe Zangat. All right, Joe doesn't know. Couple of hundred last year. I said, in tonight's meeting, how much is being awarded or at least encumbered to clean and line the pipes? Could cover, right. What's that money gonna be used for? Because it says all kinds of stuff, including more work at the treatment plant. How much do you have a plan right now to use for cleaning and lining?
Possible if the chemical project comes to a certain level.
That's the answer. Okay, that's the answer. We don't know. How much are you allotting tonight for new water meters?
One point nine nine million.
One point nine million. Okay. So the priority now is to get the bills up. You raised... You raised the water rates in town twenty percent in twenty nineteen, when if you want to call this admission... Administration took over. That's this administration. Full disclosure, I'm the last administration that they're talking about. We lost in twenty eighteen. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. At some point, guys, you gotta take responsibility for something, okay? So you've had all that time, and your biggest plan right now, one point nine million. One point nine million is to replace the... 1.9 million is to replace the meters, the thing at the end of the line that we have to take over. And if you listen to Mr. Zanga, he's, "The meters never run fast. Nobody's gonna get a credit." Okay? They all run slow. Yeah, I'm just saying what you said. I'm not accusing you of anything. And, Mr. Mayor, do we not use Robert's Rules anymore? If somebody has the floor, they should be able to speak. If they ask a question, that's one thing. But Mr. Zanga said, "Nobody's meters run slow." So why don't, first of all, and again, your whole discussion of the water utility and the meters, whatever, you have a water utility. You don't have to build a water utility. You have it. It's self-sufficient, right? That's why you raised the rates 20% in 2019, uh, 20%, I believe in 2021. And Mr. Zanga had mentioned in a previous meeting that you're looking to another rate increase next year. So you have all that money in the utility that you can use. And yes, you don't have enough money to fix it, but you can have the money to bond. And what are you bonding for? You're bonding for water meters. Or actually, you have the money, right? You're, you're awarding the money for water meters. It's backwards. Okay? Everything that comes down about the bad water is, "Run your water for 15 minutes in the morning." Okay? It's the worst thing you could possibly say. You know, blaming somebody else is the worst thing you could possibly say. We're thinking about it. It's the worst thing you could possibly say. Uh, we can't get money from anybody. It's the worst thing you could possibly say. All they want is clean water. Okay? And whether it comes from taxes, which it can't because you have a water utility, just do something now to clean the water. That's all. There's no more excuses. There are no more, "The town did this. The East Brunswick water's bad. The this, the that. The plant is working fine." Who cares? And again, it was a mistake with how they were running the plant that got us into this issue of having the copper levels high. At one point, somebody said they were only a little bit higher. No, they were 1.8 parts per million or whatever, instead of 1.3, which is the allowable level. That's 40% higher. It's not a little. Okay? And you should have just notified us. That's all. You knew there was a problem, and you didn't say anything until now, when the two guys were here at the last meeting saying, "We have it all fixed. We're putting the cleanest water that we've ever had into the dirty pipes. You should be happy." And they're talking about how they want to make sure they don't do the same bad thing again. But that's not up and running, right? You're still putting lime in, which has worked for 50 years. We're not using the caustic soda yet. And Rich is a good guy. But you know what? You can't blame the state because of how they do regulations. The regulations are there. The test is this. You either pass or you fail, and you go forward with it. But the coolest thing would have been is if we knew that we weren't passing, that you just told us. And you have so many options and so many ways to do it. I see nobody's taken the challenge of finding the thing. So again, just do something. Okay? Don't tell us you're going to do it, or we don't have the money. That's not the answer. Just do something.
Want me to tell you where it is? Can I respond to him, Mayor? If he looks on the website, under Department of Public Works, on the Water Department, you will see it with all the yearly reports. Quite, the yearly, that's where it is.
Okay. Here's what they call the bulletin board on the website. Okay? It's got all of the notices that they put out. Easter egg hunts, all the important things, like the Easter egg hunts, the, uh, the police academy, not picking on you, uh, all that kind of stuff. And you can go back and find bulletins going back to 2021. That's where it should have been. That's all. It could, no. It's, it's common sense.
Okay. Anyone else? First call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor? Come on, wake up. All in favor? Up, okay. All against, eyes have it. Okay, continuing, mayor appointments, as Mr. Byrne pointed out, uh, two to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, one elevated, one new. Uh, we come to the consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution 202301 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore, Beadon is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2023-173 to 2023-193. 173, Resolution Authorizing 2023 Salaries of Certain Officials and Employees. 174, Resolution Rejecting the Bids for the Water Treatment Plant Chlorination System Upgrades Project. 175, Authorizing Contract Award to Core and Main for Water Meter Replacement Project. 176, Authorizing the Submission for NJDOT 2024 Trust Fund Application by CME Associates. 177, Resolution Authorizing the Submission for NJDOT Transportation Trust Fund by CME Associates. 178, Approve Electric Demand Charge Relief for Not-for-Profit Organizations and Public Schools. 179, Authorize the Requisition of Funds for Payment to the Custodian of School Monies. 180, Authorize Waiver of Liquor Buyback Trust Fees. 181, Property Tax Refund. 182, Authorizing Approval to Submit a Grant Application and Execute a Grant Contract with NJDOT for Improvements to Franklin Street, Olcheski Avenue and Alburn Street. 183, Approval of a Special Events Permit to the Portuguese Club to be Held on June 10, 2023. 184, Authorize the Purchase and Installation of a Camera System. 185, Authorize Certain Utility Refunds. 186, Authorizing the Application for the Lead Grant Assistant Program. 187, Insertion of Any Special Item of Revenue in the Budget. 188, Appointment of Employees as Summer Help to the Department of Public Works. 189, Accept May 1st, 2023 Regular Minutes. 190, Authorize the Bills and Claims List. 191, Appointment of a Full-Time Administrative Assistant Violations Clerk. 192, Support for Suitability of Cannabis Business for Cana Caviar LLC. 193, Confirming Appointment of Alan Piscatelli as Volunteer Firefighter to Reliable Fire Company.
Your pleasure on the consent resolutions. Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Role call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindy?
Yes. With the abstention, sorry. With abstentions of 191, 193, and then from the bills, which is 190. Uh, I got 23-00967, 00968, 01195, 01435, or 01438, and 01107.
Councilman Gretzky?
Yes, with the abstaining from, uh, Resolution Number 189.
Councilwoman Amira?
Yes.
Councilwoman Olivera?
Yes, within abstention from 183.
Council President Seula?
Yes, with the abstention from the bill list of 190 of 23, 01438, and 01107, and also 193.
Thank you. Uh, there's nothing under new business to be read separately, so we come to governing body comments. I started over there, so Councilwoman, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I'd like to thank you for your appointments to Shade Tree Commission. I know Dorian got here late. I'm unsure as to whether you wanted her to, um, give you any information on that rain garden project, or if she could maybe stay a little after so that we can discuss what further materials the borough would need regarding that. Did you guys have any questions regarding it?
Would you want to hear from her?
Sure.
All right. I'll tell you what, uh, why don't we do our comments, and then Dorian, you can come forward and, uh, speak.
Okay. Um, I did want to bring up the water issue on Monish Street. Uh, my mother-in-law also lives on Monish Street. And a little while back, when there was that, um, valve replacement issue on Amherst and Monish, I came over and I heard that the water was running constantly. Though, our clear water, our valve was open just to our, to be wasteful into the sewer. When I questioned it and I got a further in, uh, further information from Mr. Koch, the purpose of it was to keep the flow of the water in that water main. The problem was, it was open and for several days, nobody shut it off. So it was constant clean water just being wasted. Now, I know we're not, um, directly billing our residents, but as we mentioned, the MCUA billed us more and more every year of all the wasteful water that goes into our sewers. Our residents are still paying for that. Um, and then it was my understanding that that was, that valve should have been open at night and turned on only in the mor- uh, turned off in the morning. Um, I don't know if that was a miscommunication or how that went about, but we wasted lots of thousands of gallons of water for several days, uh, without a direct, long-term plan on it. So I do understand the issues on Monish Street. I know that the water doesn't flow as often, which is why they did that. But that's, that's a very temporary plan. I think we need to look more further into how we clean out those, uh, water mains that don't flow as often as the others. The county, we should be asking the county for money. We just finished saying that. Maybe the water mains on county roads are the ones that are giving us brown water, but yet we're not asking for anything. I think that definitely strikes the concern of putting our plan into place and getting everybody to help and not just waiting to see what the further plan is gonna be. I just want to remind everybody about Memorial Day and, um, hope everybody can attend to that. But we do have another meeting, and I hope that people continue to come to our meetings and voice their concerns and, um, push to see action because there are six members up here that have to make a decision. And it can't be just one, but we need to sit down and actually put the plan in place. We, we're saying we're bonding for the money with no plan. Where does that discussion start? So I'm putting the table open that for everyone because we dropped the ball with not notifying our residents. We dropped the ball with, uh, put, getting a violation for not filing on time? You know, we, we pay Agro a pretty heavy penny every month. Like, whose fault was it that we didn't, um, you know, put our papers in on time, where this violation came from? Everybody is here and they should be holding us accountable, but we also need to know who we should be holding accountable on this. The first time I saw that letter was when somebody posted it on Facebook. And I'm sure lots of our residents and lots of our council members here were also not notified. So where do we point the blame there? I think it's very important to keep this discussion open and continue to make a plan. But all I see is that we're, everything costs a lot of money and nobody's deciding where to start. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gretzky?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank our police, fire, DPW, Robert Wood Johnson, for the services that they provide us every day. All I really have to say is, uh, Memorial Day is coming up. Respectfully, uh, you know, think of the ones that have gone before us and have served. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
So, Mr. Donato, the residents, you guys all deserve an apology. No one should be spoken like that. Being that Council President Seula didn't apologize, I'll do it on his behalf. All right? That's not okay. No one deserves to be talked to like that. Councilwoman Mayor brought up that we didn't see the letter. This letter was received from the borough on September 28th. We saw the letter. I saw it from my wife on Facebook. You guys have every right to be angry because I'm angry. Everyone on this council's angry. We still don't know who knew about the letter on this council. All right? So you guys have every right to be angry with this entire situation, and you're right. Blaming past administrations is my pet pee- it doesn't work. We need to be held accountable for what we can control today. And for that, you know, I want to thank you guys. Usually, Mr. Byrne's right. We usually don't have anyone that is in attendance. So it's nice to seeing some fresh faces in here, and please continue to come back. Voices need to be heard, and hopefully things will change. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
Um, I also have someone who lives on Monish Street, as, as Councilwoman Mayor knows, my sister. We have made this a political football right now. Who did it when? Who didn't do it whenever? That shouldn't be it at all. Excuse me?
You guys are not us.
No, no, but it's, it's going, you know, and it shouldn't be that way. We need, as was said, if we have money coming in, again, the county, we have asked them on other occasions to help us out in town, and we are pretty well overlooked. We're the little pond, we're the cut-through town between East Brunswick and Saraval.
There's screaming.
I agree. And we have screams.
Yes.
We, exactly. So the mayor gave you a number. We have screamed about many things. You know what we are? We're Main Street. That's all we are. Get from East Brunswick to Saraval. There's only so much we can scream. They, it's falling on deaf ears.
Right, but then again, 1.9 versus.
I agree. So there has to be, there, there has to be a plan that we go to that section. You know, if it takes it, dig up the pipes, dig up the street, figure out what the heck it is. And again, as was said with the tax, I agree. My taxes go up my, but, and I hate to say it, but not the whole town's gonna see it that way. But they should. You should have healthy water. And, and that's my thought. Okay? Um, I hope to see you out, um, at the parade on Monday. And in order to embarrass my mother, I'm gonna wish her a happy birthday for tomorrow, Janice. I will not say her name, and I won't give you the hint on what her age is. But someone else can if they want. But happy birthday. Hope to see you over the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gindy?
Thank you. I agree with Jason that, uh, no one should ever be spoken that way. Um, you are the residents. You are the ones that put us where we are at today. You are taxpayers. You are the same people that eat, drink the same water, and for that matter, use the same electricity. So we do apologize on that behalf. The number one word I heard tonight, and I've used it in the past, is the word transparency. No matter how I look at it, no matter how I want to angle it, um, if something comes out, even though it means nothing, we should be informed. Everybody here probably didn't know about that letter as much as you didn't. When I found out about it, believe me when I tell you, I was already on the phone with the DP. I deal with them as much as Rich does. Uh, and their exact words were, "This was done last year. Why are you finding out about it now?" I couldn't give a straight answer. Unfortunately, a finger has to be pointed. I don't know who it is. I've also heard that how prior administrations, I'm sorry, that's what you call a sign of weakness. And the reason I say that is this. In the last past, I'm gonna say year, I've been speaking to a lot of townships in regards of what their plans have been, which we obviously don't have. And if we do, I haven't heard of it. Middlesex Borough, Spotswood, Milton. I've spoken to our engineer, and I've spoken to several engineers, in regards of what can possibly be done to our water lines. You're talking about 60 miles. You're talking about millions of dollars. The question is, how can we resolve the problem starting off with sections? It starts off with your residents calling. I live on George Street. I have water, I still have brown water. And I have two little girls. I have a business on Whitehead, and I still have brown water today. I left the business before I got here. Still have it. I know what you're going through. I had enough, just as much as probably everybody on this board. And I promise you that there will be a, uh, a solution. Whether it's gonna cost us or not, the water is our lifeline. We, we live on, it's our number one thing. You know, you don't see me wearing white shirts anymore, just like she said. All right? So we hear your cry. Believe me, we, we, we're hearing it. So, uh, I could tell you that bear with us. We're gonna do it. Onto other news. As you heard, bike rodeo, June 3rd, at 9 o'clock at St. Mark's Christian Parking Lot. Please bring out your kids' bicycles. These kids always have a good time. If you have children, bring them out, please. Fishing Derby, same thing, June 4th, 10 to 12, at Kerkowski Park. It's a great time. Supposed to be great weather, hopefully. I also want to recognize a new business that opened up. I also want to recognize a new business that opened up on Jackson Street, the Zepley Guy. The guy is phenomenal, please come visit this guy. On May 13th, I had the opportunity to visit, and I should say be part of a 100th anniversary, which was held at the Filo Lodge 243. These masons are remarkable. Please recognize these guys, these guys are the backbone of our country. But then again, the last and final, I know that Monday is Memorial Day, everybody looks at it as a day off. It's not a day off for these vets. They did a lot for us, we are, here, because of them. So freedom pretty much lands on their backs. We thank you, and we appreciate what you have done. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council President Seula?
Thank you. Just to reiterate, again, I'm very passionate when it comes to problems in town, and what they had said, they had no right to say, but I'm very sorry about that. But I get very passionate, I've been in this town for all my life. I've served this town for over 40 years, and I'm very passionate when it comes to the town. I promise you, I will be looking into things, I'll be having meetings. We don't, he hasn't had a meeting with them, so I will step in and have a meeting with our DPW Director and the Water Department, and I'll keep everybody posted through the website on what's going on with the water. This way, we're transparent, and everybody knows what's going on. If there's something happening, I'll make sure that it's posted through the Facebook page. I believe it's South River Borough on the Facebook page, it's the new one. So we'll be working on that. And lastly, to our veterans, thank you for all your service. Welcome home. Please come out and support them on Monday, the parade. Let them know that you do care, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The way that we honor our vets today, now, while they're alive, is honoring those that have passed, and that is what Memorial Day is all about. I'm not gonna say anything more about the water, you've heard enough about that today. One thing, though, I will say about it is, you know, talk about the past, doesn't matter. We are moving forward. The one thing that definitely we have to move is faster. We're gonna have to move faster and get more things done, whether it's lining pipes, changing pipes, whatever, but it has to be done faster, we are moving too slow on it. That is loud and clear. By the way, there are other water flows, devices in town that are operating also. This was something done differently on Monish, but there are other places that have, that the water is being drained out of the pipes. And if this doesn't work, well, then we're gonna have to go to, do something different there. The Rain Fair, congratulations, Shade Tree Environmental Commission, excellent job doing it, first time around. You learned a lot, and you'll be able to work on that in the future, in terms of doing that. I mentioned that, the bicycle rodeo and the parade. It's a chance for the town to come together, and that's what we have to do, come together. We'll keep our fingers crossed that the weather's good for the parade, we'll come anyway because we're gonna march. It's a chance for us to come together, meet at the museum, hear a few speeches, and remember. A chance to honor those that have given their lives for us, a chance of the town to unite, and that is something in this day and age that is very important. So please, come to the parade, have a safe Memorial Day. Our next meeting is June 10th, at, June 10th?
June 12th.
June 12th? I'm sorry. All right, June 12th, 7:00 PM. Anything else to come before us?
Oh, Dorian.
Oh, yes, yes, Dorian, please. Thank you for reminding me.
Want to give me, just pass them down?
Just briefly, so, okay.
Well, I do apologize for not being here earlier. I was at the Edison Council meeting, and Dr. Chris Abrupta, who is on the, back of the brochure, he's been doing green infrastructure for stormwater management. And stormwater management is flooding in New Jersey. We have been doing overdevelopment, and as of January 1, 2023, the state law says now it's required to do retrofitting and come back to a more natural state. And rain gardens are one of the most popular programs that he's done. He's done over 500. I took the training, I've taken additional training, urban forestry tree training just recently, I was core-trained. And there was also, I handed out the brochure to the Edison Township. In addition, I handed out this toolkit, and this is a toolkit for municipalities to plan for these projects. It's now a requirement as of January 1. They do have time to get this done, and basically, what the presentation did was secure Edison Township to put in a rain garden at each and every school through the Board of Education. They're on board with it, as well as the Town Council. They were also talking about tonight, approving a complete streets with green streets in mind, and what happens is, is, I live in Milltown, excuse me, 24 Reva Avenue, Milltown, we don't have much catch basins on Main Street. So what happens is, the last storm, Ida, and the one, two weeks prior to it, almost went into the doors of our businesses. I don't know if that's what you're experiencing here, but I've been here, where I've seen the bridge flooded out. It, it's enormous. The more you do upstream, the more people benefit downstream. It improves your water quality, it reduces flooding. The rain guard, what it does, it infiltrates slowly, the stormwater that comes off. Wherever it flows to, towards the rain garden, it also helps clear the pollution. It also gives you improved water quality, and also reduces flooding. And this is one of the projects I've been working on. Spotswood Library will be getting one installed. Because I'm a GI champion, I have a lot of resources, as well as working with Rutgers University, who is part of the program. And they've been doing this for over 18 years. I went to the one water summit, I really want to specify this, it was in 2019, and I was just shocked. Every state, other than Alaska, was not there, and Hawaii, have been doing this for 15 to 20 years. Now, as of January 1, too, we have to work on a resiliency plan. They have resiliency plans in other states, Georgia, North Carolina, Los Angeles, they're doing phenomenal, and they are accomplishing in overburdened communities and underserved communities, as well as everywhere. They're doing it on the people's lawns. There's a rebate program for homeowners, we have to build up to that. But school districts are the easiest to get done, your public places are also easy to get done. It's could be planting of trees, and it's a pollinator garden, your rain garden. So it's bringing out bees and, and your butterflies. And it also brings the habitats, you know, the birds and stuff. It's a great improvement, it's less costly than trying to do other things, like putting in major basins that you may not have any. So it's a really benef, really benefits everyone. And I've reached out to Spotswood, they're gonna be installing one. Two years ago, I reached out to South Brunswick Library, as you know, the libraries were waiting for their grant funding. It finally came through. They are gonna install it next year, in 2024, because they're renovating. That was me. I, all I did was send them these links, send them the guidance manual and this information, and they said, definitely, we need to do something. People realize we're just flooding all over. And two weeks prior to Ida, everyone got it in their basement. We got it in our basement, it was the first time. It was really, you know, sad. And we need to do these projects now, and move forward. There's stormwater planters, you can take up some of your sidewalk, it uses the same basis to control the water, you know, from flash flooding. Now, when you have those storms of two to three, four inches, it will infiltrate slowly and minimize the comp, you know, impact. Of course, if it's eight inches, or, you know, in a 24-hour period, or further up, that's, that's a little bit different. However, these flash flooding storms, it really will make a difference. So, basically, what most of the towns are doing is the Public Works assists with these projects, they have to learn how to do it anyway. They dig out the old soil, get rid of the soil, and they assist with putting the new premium soil and the premium mulch. And then we get the volunteers with the students, if it's at the schools or in the towns, and that's why I'm on the green team. We want to make sure it's a community project, invite people, engage with people. It's, it's just so important to plant these trees or these rain gardens, whatever the pollinator gardens, whatever we do, because you're gonna see less and less of that big impact of flooding. So that's the reason we're gonna do the rain gardens. Schools are the quickest to get done first. Edison did Thomas Jefferson School. I have an Eagle Scout that's gonna be doing JP Stevens High School in Edison, he's working on it right now. He'll fundraise for the funding that he needs, but if the town helps with the cost, it's gonna be a nominal fee. It's not gonna be as huge. And if we get the scouts involved, it's not gonna be as an exorbitant amount of cost to people in the town or the school district. But these are just one of the many things that the Public Works should be, I know in my town, Ralph Jazanowski is the supervisor, he's been hearing about this for years. I successfully had four rain gardens installed with Rutgers assistance, and I had an Eagle Scout install one as well in Mill Palm Park. So we have two in Mill Palm Park, they're doing their job. The first two years, you really have to maintain it, weed it, take the trash out, you know, things blow in the wind, so, and, and you trim it down. And once you get the maintenance down, it grows and, and fills up that area where the weeds won't come and grow back. So it's a really important tool for us to consider. And stormwater planters as well, our bioswales, it's, all does the same thing, and it just depends, sometimes it's not as, you know, flowery and beautiful, it's sometimes it serves as per, as purpose to capture the stormwater and, and reduce flooding in, in the towns.
So, Dorian, the question that they were having when they looked at the agreement was the, the work that needed to be done through DPW. So the conversation we had was that they would be doing all the digging up?
Correct, yes.
What was the concern that we had for the borough to do?
We have to understand when you're digging it up, too, the Milltown, forget it, it was not so much the Eagle Scout project, but on the corner, it was just rock, and, and it was, it really needed to have a machine pick it up. So it's really based on the area, that some areas are just so rocky in this state, as you know, or it's clay, that's really hard.
I don't think it's the digging up.
Wasn't it the...
What, what's the word? What's the word?
The terracing.
Terracing?
Okay. Well, what happens is, Rutgers designs all these drafts, and they're readily available, and I can certainly email it to you. That's the one we got. And, correct, for that particular one. So what the Board of Education decide is if they want to do the number one, two, two design, or number four design. And then they, Rutgers would mark it out, and of course, educate the Public Works staff all about rain gardens, as well as educate the students all about the rain garden and its purpose. So there is education involved, and maintenance as well. They would not have to do the maintenance, the Public Works, obviously because it's on Board of Ed property. It would come through the maintenance grounds people. And Steve is really, took us for a tour, we walked all the way around, on the rainiest day, it was supposed to stop raining, and it was so damp and cold, we walked the whole route with Rutgers, as well as myself, and we determined that these were the locations for the schools where we would be able to possibly do a rain garden. We still have to check and call 811, of course, to see if that's doable in those areas. And as far as we were told by Steve, the supervisor of grounds and maintenance, it's, it seems like most of those areas are pretty open for, for a rain garden.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else to come before us?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Seula, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it, June 12th, at 7:00 PM. We stand adjourned.